Best way to do golf is channel four. I said the best way to golf is channel four.
Good morning, everyone. Today is Monday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four is now ten a.m. We're here for a regular session of the Hunt County Commissioners' Court. This time I'll call the meeting to order. We have Commissioner Hutchins, Monroe, Martin, and Harrison present. I'm Judge Stovall presiding over the meeting. I'd like to congratulate Commissioner Monroe on being a granddaddy over the weekend. Got him a new little one in his family. This time we'll have public testimony. Speakers are limited to three minutes and should be conduct themselves in a civil manner. The Commissioners' Court cannot take action on items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Concerns will be addressed by county staff and they may be placed on future agendas or addressed by some other course of response. Is there anyone online?
Yes.
Anyone here wish to speak? Being none, I'll close the public testimony. We have no old business, no business. We have no, nothing on the consent calendar action items. If we have anything from Auditor's Office? Nothing? All right. Action item one is the discussion of the budget. I'm going to postpone that. We got some people here that might need to get back to work or something, so we'll come back to that later. The reappointment of Dr. Gina Rushing as Hunt County Local Health Authority for a two-year term. We've contacted her and she wishes to continue as our authority, so I would recommend approval of this and entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
And a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number three, consider and discuss in the fiscal year twenty twenty-four county budget. I already said we're going to skip that. We'll skip one and three both for now. Action item four, consideration and action on resolution sitting September third, twenty twenty-four is the public hearing for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five county budget and order publications for notice on and all related issues. Commissioners, y'all have any problems with that date? If not, entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number five, consider and take action on the resolution sitting September tenth, twenty twenty-four is the public hearing date for approving the tax rate and accepting the proposed property tax rate for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five county budget and all related issues. Commissioners, y'all have any problem with that? That'll be at our first regular meeting in September. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item six, consider and take action on a resolution to provide written notice to each elected county and precinct officer of the officer's salary and other related expenses pursuant to section one five two point oh one three C of the Texas Local Government Code to be included in fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget and all related issues. Entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number seven, discuss and possibly take action on approving order to appoint judges and alternate judges for elections. Ms. Ash.
Good morning.
Morning. Is that mic on? Yeah, okay.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
This is something that we do every two years. I'm here to present the list of judges and alternate judges. Each of you should have a list of that or a copy of that in your packet. This list is based on the names submitted by each of your party chairs. I'm requesting that the court approve these appointments.
All right, Commissioners, you got any questions? Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number eight, discuss and possibly take action on approving order and notice of November fifth, twenty twenty-four general election. Deanie?
Yes, sir. I'm here to request that the court approve the order and notice of the November fifth general election. It's worth mentioning that the polling location for precinct four thirty-three that was previously at Reese Davis Rec. Center is going to be at Bethlehem Baptist Church due to the renovation, so that one has changed. There, for the November general election, there will be two early voting polling locations. One will be at Fletcher Warren Civic Center and the other will be at Caddo Mills ISD. They will both have all ballot styles, so all voters can go to either location and vote.
It'll be at their administrative office. Is that?
It will.
Caddo?
Caddo Administration.
Administrative office, okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action number, item number nine, discuss and possibly take action on approving notice for the November fifth, twenty twenty-four special election for the incorporation of Merritt, Texas. Deanie?
Yes, sir. This is just a request for the court to approve the notice of election to incorporate Merritt.
Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Action number ten, the variance request to allow a new tract to be created with substandard frontage in precinct three. Brian, you going to brief us?
This is an old tract that was created back in the eighties. It's two hundred and sixty-six feet wide and he's wanting to sell the front section of the property, about six acres. That's a little bit on, you know, it's ten feet shy. It should have two hundred and seventy-five feet and it's only got two sixty-six. He is using all of the frontage on that lot, so he can't, he can't get any additional frontage. He owns a piece of property next to it. That's why he's retaining the rear of the property. He's gonna, he's keeping ownership of the back four acres and just selling the front six. The reason he can't get additional frontage from his tract next door is that there's a tract that is owned by his mother that is in the front. That would, that cuts the, cuts the ability to expand the frontage.
I was looking at this. Basically, I only show they said that it was actually two hundred and seventy foot wide. The original was two seventy and now it's two-
The original thought was that the track was two hundred and seventy feet.
Yes.
Once the surveyor came in and actually measured it, it ended up being two hundred and sixty-six.
Normally, as far as the variance, you know, I would say no, but it's actually the same, it's the same width as it was in eighty-one.
That's right. There's nothing changing.
I believe that we ought to consider in reference to a variance due to the fact that that's what the property was sold at to begin with.
That's right. He's not, he's not reducing the frontage. He's not changing the existing frontage as it was in eighty-one. He's actually reducing the lot size where it was a ten acre lot. It was two sixty-six. It'll now be a six acre lot. It's two sixty-six.
So the lot he's going to retain, though, with the additional acreage, he won't be able to divide it any further. Is that correct?
And it's adjacent to the rest of his farm, so he's just, he's keeping that back four acres with his, with his existing farm.
Has he just got ten acres or he's just got one tract or has he got additional tracts?
He has two tracks. He owns also the track, the track on the west side of this property.
Okay.
But there's a small piece at the, at the road that his mother owned, an acre tract that his mother owned, and so he doesn't have the ability to cheat over into his existing lot to get additional frontage, which that would also leave his lot.
He doesn't plan on selling it to anyone outside that would need the entrance. Concerned with the remaining acreage sales of the Nelson Purchase, my plans are to sell at a future date to Nelson or to my neighbor to my west. Both have voiced an interest. He can't sell it. It'll be line lock, but he can sell it to the people beside him.
That's correct. He can sell to an adjacent property owner.
Yes.
All right. Entertain a motion for approval?
I do make a motion that we allow this variance.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number eleven, final plat of Oakwood Edition Phase Two in precinct three. Brian?
Pretty simple, one lot subdivision, and actually it's kind of a remainder tract. The property owner subdivided the, the rest of the property a couple of years ago. This track had some flood plain on it. At that time, the engineers couldn't determine a finished floor elevation for the lot. Well, now we have some additional data from, from FEMA, so they can determine the finished floor elevation, so he's wanting to plack this last little piece and be able to sell it and develop it.
How many acres approximately? I see the line across there. Would they say that they still have one point five acres out of the flood area?
Yes. Yes, they have, they have quite a bit still out of the flood. There's not a whole lot of flood plain on this property, so yes, he's well over, over acre and a half still.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item twelve. Buddy, did you want to say anything here?
No.
Okay. Action number twelve, the final plat of Green Edition in precinct three.
Simple two lot plat on FM five thirteen. Everybody's got the furniture they need and it's, it's okay.
Any questions? Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item thirteen, the final plat of William Reese Edition in precinct three.
Okay. This is the plat for the variance. This is what they're proposing. Now, I do have some comments on the plat as far as building line and easements and all. It's not going to change the layout of the lot. It'll just change the, you know, details on the face of the plat, so that'll be addressed on final, on the plat that is signed.
So they just did the preliminaries because of the variance we were asking for?
Some surveyors, whenever they turn in the review copies of the plat, they'll put preliminary on it.
Okay.
And then they'll put final on the final copy that's to be recorded and signed. That's, that's pretty common, especially when you're-
This is a final.
No.
This, well, this will be the, the final plat. This is what the final plat will look like with added easements and, and the building line across the front, so it, but this is the, the layout of the lot and the dimensions of the lot that it'll be.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion for approval of the William Reese Edition conditioned on all of the building lines and easements being placed on the final plat.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Action item fourteen, the final plat of West Doyle Ranch in precinct four.
Okay. One lot plat on the corner of thirty-four and County Road forty-six eighteen. There is an existing house and septic and everything. This is already a developed lot. He's just severing it from the rest of his farm to, to sell it. He's keeping the remaining stuff, so. Simple plat.
And he's got plenty of frontage other places?
Yes, yes.
Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Gentlemen?
Thank you, Brian. All right. We'll go back now to, I wouldn't. Go to item three. We'll just skip one altogether since it's repetitive. Consider and discuss discussion of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five county budget and all related issues. Commissioners, we filed the budget for next year last Thursday afternoon late. I don't think y'all all got, y'all all got your copies of it? I know you hadn't any time really to probably look it over or anything, but if you got any comments, I don't have any further thing to talk about today, but if y'all had the chance to look at it, got any questions or concerns, we can sure address it now.
I haven't really had a chance to dig it.
Yeah, I didn't figure anybody did, so. I'm putting it on here just in case. Did, you know, we set our public hearing for the, what was it, third? That'd be the Tuesday after Labor Day. Is there any, any desire to have a workshop after y'all had time to review it before that day or? I'll be gone, after court next Tuesday, I leave for Austin for the legislative summit, I guess, for TAC, so I'll be in Austin Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, but if we want to do it at next Tuesday's meeting, make it go longer or whatever, or do it, schedule one for after lunch and come back, whatever. If y'all want, I'm just, I'm making an offer if anybody's going to need to do that before we have our public hearing especially.
I think generally it's, it would be a good idea to have a workshop, so we can, I'm sure when we've all gone through some, we'll have some questions, so we need a place to-
Well, it'll be on Tuesday's agenda, so you want to just do it Tuesday afternoon if we need to. We can recess and come back after lunch if it runs too long or something. I just don't know how long it's going to take. It could take a while. If there's a lot of questions, it might be, take us a while. We need to get it answered.
I agree. If it's on the agenda and we go along, we can probably, we can just recess and come back.
Are you talking about having it on the twenty-seventh, Tuesday after court?
Well, it'll be on, it'll be on our agenda, so we, we can either schedule one on Monday or we can do it during Tuesday's session, and if we run late, we can recess and go eat lunch and come back.
I think we ought to do it on the twenty-seventh because we know everybody's going to be here.
Well, it's not, it's not a public notice yet, but they'll have people here on Tuesday. That's correct.
Yes.
Which is fine. I don't, if everybody's all right with that, that's the way we'll handle it and we'll, we'll move forward then. Do we have anything we need to talk about in executive session or? So what, item one? All right. This time I'll entertain a motion to go in executive session under item one. One, two, and three.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We're in executive session at ten seventeen. All opposed, motion carries, we're in executive session at 10:17.